Local access cable on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page. And we'll be able to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. To participate remotely from a computer, go to the Zoom meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. I'd like to introduce you to the board. To my left is Lisa Normandin, the board secretary. I'm Alfred Gravel. This is James Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, Tony Nacastro.
Hans.
Huh?
Pat.
What did I say?
Hans.
Hans, that's what you said.
I'll take him.
He's used to Hans being always there.
All right, I'm going back. Patrick Kelly, Tony Nacastro, Don Gurney, and Steve Dubois. The way that hearing will go is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address. And board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. Tonight, we have two cases. One is Peninsula Drive and the other is 38 Oak Ridge Road. And both petitioners are seeking a special permit to raise the existing structure and construct a new dwelling on the property. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the first petition.
Okay, this is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Denise Sharpentier of 1 Maticet Drive in Penfield, New York, 14526. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows: Special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw Section 250-7.2B and 250-7.4. An application for the same dated 8/9/23 was submitted to the building inspector and was denied by the same for the reasons stated in the letter attached here, too. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this appeal is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, 250-7.2B and 7.4A. The street address is 6 Peninsula Drive, Assessors Map 29, Parcel 46. Name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Amy and Mary Sharpentier, 6 Peninsula Drive, Lunenburg. Deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 7476, Page 129, and recorded 9/20/11. And it is signed by Amy Denise Sharpentier of 1 Maticet Drive in Penfield, New York, on August 21, 2023. The project narrative. Existing conditions. The subject property is located at 6 Peninsula Drive, which is shown on Assessors Map 29, Parcel 46. The property is located on Hickory Hills Lake and contains approximately 26,942 square feet of land and 124.9 feet of frontage, making the lot nonconforming with respect to land area. The lot contains an existing single-family dwelling, accessed via a paved driveway. The existing dwelling is serviced by municipal water and an onsite sewage disposal system. The entirety of the existing house is located within the 100-foot buffer zone and is located within the side yard zoning setbacks, 11.8 feet to the northern property line and 10.7 feet to the southern property line. The entire property is located within the Residence A zoning district. Proposed conditions. The applicant is proposing to raise the existing structure and construct a new dwelling on the property. The proposed structure has been placed on the lot such that it will not be located closer to the property line than the existing dwelling. The construction of the dwelling will require the construction of a new sewage disposal system. As the project involves the removal of existing nonconforming structure, the proposed dwelling is considered a new structure on the lot. As such, the building commissioner has required us to file the special permit application pursuant to Section 750-7.2B and 250-7.4 of the Protective Zoning Bylaw. The special permit criteria. The question and answers are as follows. Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The response. The proposed use of the property is the same as the existing use, a single-family residence. As such, the proposed action will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous as it will not add additional traffic and does not constitute a new danger of fire or explosion. B. Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply. The improvements will increase the assessed value of the property and also the market value of the property. As such, we expect the proposed dwelling to have a positive effect on land values in the neighborhood. C. Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightlines if in open use? The response. The proposed use will remain unchanged. The applicant has hired Damon McQuade, AIA, to design the proposed home to ensure that the proposed dwelling fits in with the character of the neighborhood. D. Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The reply. As mentioned, the property use will continue to be a single-family residence. The structure will not be located closer to the property lines than the existing structure and will not produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare that would be detrimental to the adjacent properties. I have a letter dated August 7, 2023, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The purpose of this letter is to provide written authorization to allow staff from Dillison Roy Civil Design Group, Inc. to represent our proposed project at 6 Peninsula Drive. And that's signed by Amy Denise Sharpentier. There is a butters list in the application. All the butters were notified two weeks prior to tonight. There is a field card, the deed, and the request for zoning determination from the building inspector, which I will not read. And there's a letter. To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter to acknowledge and consent that two trees on my property of 5 Park Street Terrace, Lunenburg, Mass. should be removed pursuant to the notice of intent for construction on the 6 Peninsula Drive, Lunenburg, Mass. property. The trees are on the shared property line. It would either interfere or be damaged by construction project. Trees are in close proximity with both my house and the new house and are a potential threat to both. As an abutter, I am familiar with the proposed construction at 6 Peninsula Drive and have no concerns. I fully support the project. Thomas Sharpentier, owner of 5 Park Street Terrace. There's another letter dated 8/29/23 to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We, the owners of 8 Peninsula Drive, have met with Denise Sharpentier regarding the proposed project at 6 Peninsula Drive. We understand that the proposed project involves the demolition of an existing house, the construction of a new dwelling on the property, modifications to the existing driveway, a new septic system, and modifications to the vegetation along our shared property line. We also understand that they intend to install a fence along our shared property line. It was described to us that the existing dwelling is located within the side yard zoning setback and that the new dwelling will not be located any closer to our lot line than the existing structure. Subject to the proposed project being within the guidelines described to us, we are in favor of allowing the project to proceed. Should you need to contact us regarding our thoughts on the proposed project, feel free to contact us at the information provided below. And that's signed John and Teresa Peters of 8 Peninsula Drive. There is a plan done by Dillison Roy of the proposed location of the home and a rendering of what the home is going to look like. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant or his representative to come forward to the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Ryan Proctor. I'm with Dillison Roy Civil Design Group. I'm here tonight representing the applicant Denise Sharpentier, who's with us in the audience tonight. Thank you, Lisa, for reading the application. I won't be too redundant with the zoning description that we went through in our narrative. I will just add that we have met with Conservation Commission once already. We do have a follow-up meeting next Wednesday where we're going to be addressing some of their comments. And then we have filed with the Nishoba Board of Health for the new septic system, which is going to be a fully compliant septic system for the new house. So we are working through those processes concurrently with your board as well. So the project does involve the removal of the existing structure and the construction of the new single-family dwelling, which we addressed in our narrative. If there's any specific questions that you may have, I'm happy to answer those now.
Okay, thank you. Just go over. I know we have the setbacks out on the drawing, but just review the setbacks along with the height.
Okay, absolutely. So I did prepare a presentation plan here. So on the southern property line in this picture, the existing house is drawn in red. I'm just going to step over.
Take the mic with you.
Oh, absolutely. So the existing dwelling is shown outlined here in red. There is a portion of the deck that extends within the 30-foot no-touch, or I'm sorry, 50-foot no-build buffer zone, which is one of the reasons we were in front of the conservation. And the new dwelling that we're proposed to construct is outlined in blue, shown with this teal hatching. The existing setbacks are shown to the existing house here in red. To the southern property line, it's 10.7 feet. And here I have the proposed setback to the new house, also at 10.7 feet. So we're not getting closer to that property line. Similarly, in the northern property line, we have an existing dimension here to the existing corner of the house of 12.3 feet. And I have two dimensions to the proposed house, also at 12.3 feet. So again, we're not creating the structure that's more nonconforming than the existing structure is now.
Okay. And clearly, you can't do anything with those setbacks as far as with the houses, because if you move it one way, you just make that side more nonconforming. If you move it the other way, you make the other one more nonconforming.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I just had one quick one. Do you happen to know the height of the existing structure?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I know the max in the Resa district, I think, is 38 feet. And we're well below that from the top of the roof to the highest point adjacent to the house.
That's a ranch-style home, right?
I believe.
Existing?
It has a.
Yeah, on the property card.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
So basically, from 912 square feet to the total, I get 5438 when you add everything together.
For gross floor area?
For the, including the garage and the basement and everything else.
That could be. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. Yeah.
Where is the existing septic system?
There are two leach pits approximately where the proposed garage is going to be now. So we are pushing the new septic back further away from the lot. And again, it is fully compliant with local and Nishoba Board of Health regulations in total five.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Okay. And of course, the ranch was like a one-story. You're going to a two-story.
That's right.
And also have a walkout basement, correct?
Yes, we are maintaining that.
Okay. Now, when you say that part of that encroaches onto the conservation's 30-foot no-touch, is that correct?
Yeah, so I misspoke. It's the 50-foot no-build line. So this is the existing deck that extends into that portion, which we are maintaining. We're holding that line. And that was presented to Conservation last week.
Okay. And you've already, like you say, you had a preliminary meeting with Conservation on that issue.
We did, yeah. And we have a follow-up meeting.
And on the septic.
I say that again, I'm sorry.
And on the septic as well?
We've submitted to Nishoba Board of Health. We're waiting for their review at this point.
Okay.
Have you resolved the issue of the trees between the two properties that were mentioned in the report?
Yes, so that letter was from Thomas Sharpentier to the north here. That's the applicant's brother. So that letter was in support of those trees. So we're working on mitigation. And that's, we're working through that with the Conservation Commission. That was one of their items that we were to address.
And you mentioned that you were going to put a fence. Is it going to be a live fence or wooden fence or?
It's going to be a privacy fence. I believe it's going to be vinyl.
Privacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I don't have any others.
Okay. Just so you know, the finding on this is the finding has to be that the new structure will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structures to the neighborhood. That's what we need to satisfy, which I'm satisfied.
I'll make a motion that we grant the.
Our public.
Oh, sorry.
Would anyone like to speak from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
Okay. Then I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the special permit as found in the two codes that were mentioned in the application.
My second motion?
Give a first and a second. I will call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And aye. With that, the special permit is granted. I do have to give a post-decision instructions. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority of the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance of such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, it should be recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until that has been recorded. Special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. With that, good luck with your new house.
Thank you.
I will say, if that's what they're going to build, it's a nice-looking house.
I like the back there. I like the back.
Yeah, yeah.
Lot of windows to wash, though.
Okay. We will go to our next hearing. Lisa, if you would please read the next applicant.
I most certainly will. This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant, Peter and Lillian Corones, 38 Oak Ridge Road in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows: Special permit pursuant to zoning bylaws, Section 250-7.2B and 7.4A. An application for the same dated 8/10/23 was submitted to the building inspector and was denied by the same for the reasons stated in the letter attached here, too. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 250-7.2B and 7.4A. The street address of the property is 38 Oak Ridge Road, Assessors Map 135, Parcel 44. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Peter and Lillian Corones of 38 Oak Ridge Road in Lunenburg. The deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 9401, Page 83, and recorded 8/26/2019. We have no knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case. And that is signed by Peter and Lillian Corones on 8/25/2023 of 38 Oak Ridge Road in Lunenburg. Project narrative. Existing conditions. The subject property is located at 38 Oak Ridge Road, which is shown on Assessors Map 135, identified as Parcel 44. The property is located on Lake Shirley and contains approximately 14,950 square feet of land and 100 feet of frontage on Oak Ridge Road, making the lot nonconforming with respect to land area. The lot contains an existing single-family dwelling and detached garage. The property is serviced by a private well and an onsite sewage disposal system. The entirety of the existing house is located within 100-foot buffer zone and is located within the side yard and rear yard zoning setbacks, 5.5 feet to the southern property line and 22.1 feet to the westerly property line. The entire property is located within the outlying zoning district. Proposed conditions. The applicant is proposing to raise the existing structure and construct a new dwelling on the property. The proposed structure has been placed on the lot such that it will not be located closer to the property line than the existing dwelling and will not provide an increased setback to Lake Shirley. The construction of the dwelling will require the construction of a new sewage disposal system. As the project involves the removal of existing nonconforming structure, the proposed dwelling is considered a new structure on the lot. As such, the building commissioner has required the applicant to file the special permit application pursuant to Section 750, I'm sorry, 250-7.2B and 7.4 of the Protective Zoning Bylaw. See attached correspondence. The special permit criteria. Questions and answers are as follows. Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons? The reply. The proposed use of the property is the same as the existing use, a single-family residence. As such, the proposed action will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous as it will not add additional traffic and does not constitute a new danger of fire or explosion. B. Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The improvements will increase the assessed value of the property and also the market value of the property. As such, we expect the proposed dwelling and site improvements to have a positive effect on land values in the neighborhood. C. Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightlines if in open use? The reply. The proposed use will remain unchanged. The applicant has hired ATA Construction to design and construct a proposed home to ensure that the proposed dwelling fits in with the character of the neighborhood. D. Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The response. As mentioned, the proposed use will continue to be a single-family residence. The structure will not be located closer to the property lines than the existing structure and will not produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare that would be detrimental to the adjacent properties. Additionally, the proposed house will be installed with an increased setback to Lake Shirley. This letter dated August 24, 2023. The purpose of this letter is to provide written authorization to allow staff from Dillison Roy Civil Design Group, Inc. to represent our proposed project at 38 Oak Ridge Road. Respectfully submitted, Peter and Lillian Corones, owner and applicants. Attached is a list of butters, which were all notified two weeks prior to tonight. There is a recorded deed dated 8/26/2019. There is the property field card from the assessors' office and the building inspector's zoning determination. And there is a rendering of the home and the proposed site plan. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And again, I would invite the applicant or his rep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, Ryan Proctor with Dillison Roy, 1 Main Street in Lunenburg. Thank you again, Lisa. So this project, similar, same filing, special permit, relative to the special permit as the previous filing. Joined here by Peter Corones, the applicant, tonight. On this project, we actually have the benefit of being able to move the house and provide an increased setback to the lot lines. So the existing house, again, shown here in red, is approximately 5.5 feet away from the deck to this property line, 7.1 from the corner of the existing house to the property line. And with the new house and deck, we are providing just under 21 feet to that southern property line. So we are increasing the existing setback quite a bit with the new structure. Similarly, with the proposed garage, the existing garage is about 10 and 1/2 feet off of the front property line on Oak Ridge Road. And the new garage is 16 feet. So we are increasing that setback distance from the edge of the right away as well. Similar to the other project, we have designed a new septic system to service the new house. We have submitted that to Nishoba Board of Health for their review. And like the other one, we have had one meeting with Conservation Commission, and we are scheduled to appear before them again on Wednesday night of next week. So we are working through both of those processes as well. At this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on the application or the site plan.
There's quite a bit of difference in the elevation from the house to the garage, is there not?
There is, yeah.
Like 15 feet or something like that, probably?
Something like that. So we are doing a walkout, and the architects have designed a house so that we can sit it almost into the hill. So it'll step down, and there will be a walkout elevation below this deck. So the foundation will be stepped on the way down.
Okay. And currently, it's like a driveway that goes down to the right of where the metal garage is today.
That's right.
Is that going to, are you taking that out?
So we are modifying the existing pavement. So you're correct, the existing driveway does come down at an angle almost to the top of where this proposed retaining wall is going to be. The new pavement will square off with the proposed garage. We do intend to do some re-grading on the southern side of the proposed garage to square off the pavement on both sides of the building. So this will be the new pavement line here and similarly on this side, to square off that proposed driveway that we'll have.
Okay. And so you do need, there is a close side setback, correct? The 5.5?
With the existing structure, to the deck of the existing house.
That's the existing?
Existing is 5.5.
And what's the new?
To this house, it's 20.8.
Okay. All right. And the septic system itself, there's a lot of ledge there, correct?
We soil tested it. It was all sand and gravel. They got right down, they didn't hit groundwater or anything in that location. So we have soil tested for the design of the system.
Okay. And you also use well water there? Are they still going to use well water? There's no town water there, right?
Not that I'm aware of. They do intend to use the existing well.
Okay. All right. Some of the questions I had, I'll open it up to the board. Any questions?
Relative to the height of the building, you're increasing the height considerably. Is there, are there any neighbors around that are affected by the view or anything like that?
I'm not aware of any properties on the other side of the street, on the other side of Oak Ridge. I believe it's a dead end there, so yeah.
There are a few, but they're so far away,